Okay, I think we're ready. It's 6:45. I'd like to welcome everybody to our Reinbeck Town Board Meeting of June 13th. Would everybody please stand for the press?
(inaudible)
Thank you. I guess before we begin, I'd like to ask a moment of silence for the worst gun massacre in the history of the United States that happened this weekend in Orlando. So, if we could just take a moment. I'd like to make a motion to approve our prior minutes of May 23rd, 2016, regular town board meeting minutes, and I'll also bundle that with June 1st, 2016, our special town board meeting minutes. May I have a second? Is there any discussion?
I'm going to abstain on the second one, since I was not at that meeting.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, moved. Do we have any announcements? Reinbeck Waterfront Day.
Reinbeck Waterfront Day started out with a very rainy beginning. Lost a lot of thunder and lightning, so unfortunately we lost some vendors, but by about 1:00 it cleared up and ended up being absolutely beautiful. So, it was really nice. It was a really nice time.
Good.
Yeah, it was well attended. I mean, once I got it cleared up and people saw it was, the skies were staying blue, a lot more people came out.
We keep it-
But I think we would've had a lot more had it been-
Well, you know, thank you for all your hard work. It's all on you, and we keep it going. It'll be a nice yearly event.
Yep.[127.11][127.11](applause)
I don't really have any announcements. Does anybody have any announcements? Camp's ticking along, everything's, pool's ticking along. Okay, we have a lot of business tonight. I'm gonna take everything, I'm gonna do some of our resolutions first, but we have two public hearings tonight. We have a public hearing for a local law permitting the town to award purchase contracts pursuant to general municipal law, section 103.1, on the basis of best value. And we also have another local law repealing chapter 78 of our historic buildings and amending chapter 125 of our zoning of the town code of Reinbeck. I'm opening both public hearings. Can we take the first one first for the local law permitting the town to award purchase contracts pursuant to general municipal law? We're gonna open that, and we're not going to vote on it until our next meeting?
No, you can vote on that tonight.
We can vote on that tonight. Do we have a tab for that, John?
Tab 11.
Tab 11. I'll make a mo- did I motion this resolution? Resolution 2016-164, we opened the public hearing.
We opened the public hearing first. We closed it in a minute.
Does anybody have any comments to this? This is, Joe, do you want to introduce it, or?
I can. Um, neither.
Did you bring it forward, or is this, this was with Warren?
It was Warren.
We asked Warren to look at our procurement policy, and he did, and he updated it, and he also suggested that we adopt this law.
She basically brings the compliance with state law.
Yes.
Well, allows you to do something, and state law allows you to do something. John, this is the one we need.
Yes.
Could you explain this a little bit, John?
It's a public hearing, everything's published, and we're asking the public for comments on this local law. Joe, do you want to read it, or do we want to go through it?
Well, let me explain what it is. State law requires that for contracts above a certain amount, that the contract has to be awarded to the lowest bidder, the lowest responsible bidder. The state legislature amended that a couple of years ago to say that you don't have to award it to the lowest bidder. You can award it to a bidder who is higher if you can get the best value from it. So, for example, say the lowest bidder is in California, and it's an item that requires possible maintenance, it may be that the second bidder is close by. So, that may be an example where you would want to award it to a little bit higher. Another possible example is if it's an intricate machine, you may want to award it to somebody who has the technical expertise to fix it, rather than a chain store which is just selling it, but don't service it. State law allows you to do this, and we're just conforming our local law, which refers to the state law before it was amended.
So, these contracts are-
I'm gonna ask, we don't, this is not cross-talking from the audience. We're gonna accept public comment, but you have to come up and speak here.
Yeah, but I can't hear you.
And you have to speak to us, and-
No, that's fine.
No, we welcome it, but we just can't have a discussion going on between members of the board shouting out to the audience.
Okay, so I can just come up and ask the question?
Come up, introduce yourself, ask whatever you like, or give whatever comments you like on us.
My name is Mary Lucander, and the only question I have is, are these contracts that you, that are awarded by the town for town business? Is that what things are?
Yes.
Just so you understand, we are governed by a procurement policy. We can only purchase things of different values based on verbal bids, written bids, or published RFPs.
Right.
And whether it's a service or a capital project, like our park, so that's what guides all of our purchasing.
Right, that's fine. Thank you.
Sure. Is there any discussion? Does any of you have any questions about this? Is there any further comments from anyone in the public on this? Do we want to make a motion to close our public hearing?
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, moved, then I'd like to go to Resolution 2016, this is tab 11, 2016-164, adopting local law to be determined of 2016, entitled "A Local Law Permitting the Town to Award Purchase Contracts Pursuant to General Municipal Law, Section 103.1, on the Basis of Best Value." May I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
A second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We need roll call to local law. I'll do it by roll call. Um, uh, Joe. Who are your people? Joe Gelb, Elaine Fernandez.
Aye.
Alan Scher.
Aye.
And-
Aye.
Ed Roberts. And Elizabeth Spencey, I vote yes as well. It's not in front of me, I can barely do it, so, thank you. So, moved. We have our local law repealing chapter 78 on historic buildings and amending chapter 125 zoning of the town of Reinbeck Code. We're going to open our public hearing tonight, we have opened it, and we're going to keep it open. The county came back to us, we have to refer all local laws for zoning, planning, to the, our conservation advisory board, our planning board, and the county, the county planning board. And the county planning board of Dutchess County came back with a bunch of comments. They considered this a matter of local concern only with comments. We don't have to address the comments, but we've decided we'd like to. There are a couple of good suggestions in here. Did all of you get the county comments? They're not in our books, John, you make sure we send them out.
They were emailed.
They were emailed. We'll make sure they're in your boxes.
They just, they just came in.
I'm sorry?
They just came in, gave it us.
Yeah, they came in on June 9th. Basically, what the county said, they really went over it thoroughly. They had a question about our solar collectors, and references to minimum setbacks, and they asked us to define this term. They also had questions about roof or enclosed structures and aggregate space allowances, but I think that the most, the most important one, I think, was the, the comment that they had on use variances, and that's something that we have to go back. What we said in this law, and there are about 63 changes that we're making to our zoning. Most of them are not substantive, they're corrections, they're definitions, they're agreements, sometimes our zoning law didn't agree. We did this because over the six, seven, eight years that we passed our zoning law, our planning board and zoning board of appeals have heard comments and concerns from people before them, and issues have been raised, like generators is a big one. Generators is considered an accessory structure here, and we've decided that we want to simplify that for people. We don't want to make it an accessory structure, we want to make it easy for people to get generator permits. So, we did a lot of housekeeping. We had our planner, Art Broad help us, our land use attorney, John Lyons, and our town attorney, it was Ed and myself and the planning board chair, and the zoning board appeals chair, and another planning board member, and we spent a lot of time going through this and making these fixes. We do want to pay attention to what the county says, so we're going to have a meeting, a zoning review board meeting on Monday, we've scheduled one. Art is going to meet with John and Warren to go over the county concerns, we'll address them within the board, and bring forth a new, a slightly revised local law for our next meeting. So, I'd like to hold the public hearing open until then.
Elizabeth, I have a number of issues that I think ought to be talked about at this meeting. I can list them now, I can give them to Art separately.
If you would like to attend the meeting, I can publicly notice it, and you can attend it.
Yeah, it's on Monday.
It's on Monday at 2:00 PM.
Okay.
So, why don't we do that?
Okay. Maybe in advance.
Does that work, Art?
That works, yes. It allows you to notice it, because you're one of the majority of the town board.
We will notice it, I don't, you know, anyone else would be, Ed and I are attending it so that we don't have a majority of the board, so we will notice it, it will be, it has been a public meeting, but it will be a notice public meeting since we'll have a majority of the town board members there, and we can go over your issues. I think our planning board chair will be there, I think Sharon Schrod, our planning board member, will be there, Art will be there, and Art will have talked to Warren and John might be there as well.
I hope he is.
Okay. Do you have any comments about this while we have it open? Art, did you want to speak to this local law?
I, I think you summarized the local law, it's essentially a housekeeping law. No, I don't have any comments with respect to the, I don't have any comments with respect to the county's comments. You mentioned, however, the report from Dutchess County Planning. I think there's another important report that should be entered into the record at this point in time. Under the zoning law, this matter needed to be referred also to the town planning board, and the town planning board, last Monday evening, issued a very positive report recommending the local law be adopted, and then ultimately, a negative declaration regarding the local law, the, the also issued by the board. For the record, I'm also going to simply question whether a report has been received from the conservation advisory board yet, which was a, which was a requirement, it was referred, and the conservation advisory board has-
It was referred to them, and they did not get it to us within the allotted time. We can check with them one more time. You know, conversations have been favorable, but no.
Okay.
John, would you make sure to follow up with them? Ed's the liaison, and he'll, he'll check.
And, yes, Joe, if you would just get to me a copy of that, and I'll make sure that other members receive it, other committee members will expect to see you at a committee meeting next Tuesday afternoon?
Monday afternoon.
Monday. Monday, Thursday.
Two o'clock. Now, the EAF is going to be, we were going to complete that tonight, but we can't, because if we revise this law, which I think is our intent, we will do the EAF after we revise the law.
Yeah, the EAF, the consideration, sacred consideration should be on the law in final, the proposed law in final form. There obviously is a good chance that the, there will be some modifications in that local law.
Okay. So, we'll hold the public hearing open, but would anybody like to comment on this local law of sixty-some odd points of zoning housekeeping? Okay, we'll hold it open, and we'll address it at our next meeting. Thank you. I'm gonna go straight to some resolutions, and then I'm going to come back to presentations. That's all right with everybody. Okay, I'd like to make a motion for Resolution 2016-154 for our preliminary accounts payable abstracts, vouchers 639 through 685, 36 checks totaling $18,153.86. May I have a second? Discussion, I would like to ask that we hold a $2950 check for Evolution Technologies. It's on your second page there, I'm sorry, on your third page. It's a court request, and it's for a maintenance contract that we've never had before, and I haven't approved it and haven't seen it. So, I have a question about it, unless somebody knows something that I don't know? No?
I gather it's not budgeted, aren't they?
No, it, the reason why I flagged it is it's not in our budget, and I haven't seen it. So, I'd like to make an amendment to this resolution, that we approve the resolution minus the $2,500 for the maintenance contract for Evolution Technologies. May I have a second on that? Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, moved. Thank you. I'll make a motion for Resolution 2016-155 for our capital project abstracts, two checks totaling $24,719.4. May I have a second?
Sorry.
Is there any discussion?
I'm gonna abstain on this again.
The Thompson-Mazarella Park. I, for your abstaining, is this something that you've discussed with our town attorney?
Uh, no, I, I haven't discussed it with the ethics board.
I think maybe you should go back to the attorney and have him, you know, it seems-
Well, there's a question asked, so, who Trump's holding?
No, on the table.
I'm just saying.
You don't want to pursue it at all? I mean, it seems to me that-
Maybe I pursue it with the ethics board, that would be the plus.
And they seek advice from our attorney. Our attorney is the sort of guiding, you know, chick, not a chair, but he's the guy, the person who guides the ethics board. I would encourage you to do that, because, okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, moved.
I think I'll go, maybe.
I'd like to make a motion for Resolution 2016-156, budget transfers and amendments. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, moved. I'd like to make a res, a motion for Resolution 2016-157 for employee pool passes. May I have a second?
Second.
Traditionally, we provide pool passes for town employees for our pool season, and we give them to non-elected, year-round, part-time, and permanent employees, and their spouses, and partners, and children under 21 who live in, like, who live in the same household. So, this is pro forma yearly, and something we offer our employees as a, as a benefit. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, moved. Resolution 2016-158, disposal of non-functioning office equipment. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second? This was brought forth by our wonderful town hall staff. We have a laser jet printer and, from the planning office, and building department printer that are both non-functional, so we're moving to recycle them. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, moved. Resolution 2016-159, an application for public display of fireworks. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And second?
Second.
We have a request from 196 Burger Road for fireworks by the Legion Fireworks Company on July 16th at around 9:00 PM. All paperwork has been filled out, and it's not here, but I've seen it. Is there any further discussion?
Do the joint property owners know about this?
Yes, they're all noticed.
And they're okay?
Everybody's fine. There's fire department side off, we have a complete application. Seems to be in good working order. Is there any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Resolution 2016-160, a letter of understanding with the Frost Memorial Fund in connection with the $100,000 grant request for the construction of a pavilion at the Thomas Thompson Sally Mazarella Park. May I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Alan, do you want to talk to us about this, or?
Well, I mean, it's fairly simple. The funding for the pavilion at the park is kind of, is partially provided by the Frost Memorial Fund, and in order for them to give us the money, we have to say we're serious about building a pavilion. And that's what this letter basically says, that we're going to authorize the building to be signed.
I guess the questions that I have, it places a lot of onus on me and you. It says that we have assured the committee that the town of Reinbeck will be responsible for all present and future costs related to maintaining the pavilion trails in park. I guess it's a fair thing to ask, but we can't guarantee that future boards will-
That's, I guess that's true. I mean, it's the town park, I mean, it seems like we'll have to maintain it.
Yeah, but you can bind the future fourth, you can bind the future fourth. I think Warren really has to go over this, I think, through the law, in here, with respect to me, I don't know.
Has anybody, has Warren seen this? Has Warren given us-
I've looked.
Sally, what's our timeframe on this?
Well, it's holding up the submittable-
For the Dazni grant?
Dazni.
Dazni is the dormitory authority, state of New York grant. It's another $160,000 we've got. We've got a lot of floating pieces for the funding of this. I think we have to get it to Warren, if need be, we have to have a special meeting to get it approved before our next town board meeting. Like, you know, we're having, in fact, a meeting on Monday to go over the changes for the, where we could vote on it, as long as we vetted it, if people who aren't going to be there are comfortable with it. I'd like Warren to tell us that this is okay, because I, I don't, I want to make sure that we're not binding, that it's within our purview to do this. Of course, I'm grateful for the money, I just don't want to overstep.
I mean, my thought about this was that, you know, any town board can receive anything in the future, so it's almost a moot point.
I don't know, but I feel we're in agreement. No, the Constitution says government allows here the obligations of contract, I'm not sure that we do. You can believe no, hey, we don't like it anymore. I don't.
Okay.
Sally, you all right with that?
Yeah.
If something can happen by Monday, I guess, you know, we probably never really be ready for that.
John, will you get this to Warren tomorrow? So, we're going to table this resolution. Resolution 2016-161, recreation programs. May I have a motion and a second? I'll second it. Was there any discussion?
Yeah, this is what, item, what, eight?
This is item eight.
Oh, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, moved. Resolution 2016-162, engineering study of drainage model for recreation park and athletic fields. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Just so everybody knows, we changed the design of the park fields, so that instead of having artificial turf, we're gonna have sod. Reinbeck Field Partnership, which is the soccer league, the little league, and-
Lacrosse.
Lacrosse, thank you. Have agreed to, to pay, to pay for the seating of these fields and the leveling, so that we can use them in the playing field. In order to do that, we have to make sure that the drainage still works, because the change from an artificial turf field to a sod field changes the drainage characteristics of the whole park. So, we've been quoted a price of $4,000 to redo the engineering study that said that we had a good drainage plan before, now we have to make sure the sod field doesn't disturb that. The basic principle is that, once we're done, the drainage of the park will be at least as good as it was before we start. That's what the Department of Environmental Conservation requires. So, this study will establish that. If it doesn't, we're gonna have to go back to the drawing boards, but it's almost certain that it'll be okay. Is that a fair assessment?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Any further discussion? Does anybody have any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, moved. Resolution 2016-165, amending the intermunicipal shared technology services cooperation agreement with the village of Reinbeck. I'll make a motion, may I have a second?
Okay, what number is this?
Tab 12.
Oh, she skipped one.
Did I skip?
It's okay.
Okay.
Come back there, Joe.
10, thank you. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Can you explain what you did?
Good luck. Yes, I do.
So, in 2013, the county granted the town something like $72,000 to create a shared information technology computer infrastructure for both the town and the village. That infrastructure is complete, the servers that serve both the town and the village are on the curtain, they're behind the curtain. Village is connected to those servers via fiber optic connection that goes between the two buildings, the routers and all the other equipment. And what this amendment to the intermunicipal agreement does is that it establishes how we're gonna share the ongoing maintenance cost, which basically says that the town and the village will share those costs, and that the shares will be proportional to the number of workstations that are defined. So, at the moment, the town has 15 workstations, 14 or 15, I don't remember the number, and the village has six or seven. So, more or less, it would be a two-to-one ratio in terms of paying for the money. Garrett Bassett's here from the village, he and I worked all this out. The other aspect of this intermunicipal agreement is that we're gonna have one vendor maintain for both the village and the town. The idea is not to have two vendors, because we have two vendors, there's a lot of, there's a lot of cross-talk that we don't want to- There's a lot of, there's a lot of cross talk that we don't want to have, put it that way. So, this authorizes a supervisory sign that...
In connection with that agreement, Alan, I just have a few technical words. On the first agreement, on page two...
Yes.
Paragraph three, line starts jointly select a single vendor to provide services and maintenance. I think you need the word for, the shared...
Yeah.
...functions. And then on page three, in witness hereof, after the word "mayor," the word of...
Oh, right.
And then in the second agreement, I guess, page five, the second agreement, paragraph four, instead of on the second line, cooperation, cooperate, ATP. Four.
Oh, I, oh.
Cooperate with each other. And down in B, you need an "and" after the word "agreement." So, it's hardware and the training is provided in this agreement, "and" from the grants services. None of these are substantive, just language. Somebody may look at it a hundred years from now.
The signature's all a little...
I wouldn't be that harsh.
Thank you.
So, do we need to amend this or?
No, I think we've amended it. John will make the changes. Is there any further discussion? Gary, do you, is the village going to be signing this tomorrow or?
The village will have this one agenda for tomorrow to review and go on. Yes.
Thank you.
So, maybe we could just get these changes implemented so you have the final...
I can hear, I'll give you the changes.
John will take care of it and...
So, we pass the same.
What? Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I skipped 10, so tab 10, I'm sorry. Resolution 2016-163, commencing the local law, adoption process for the local law to be determined in 2016, amending chapter 830 of the town code, creating a recreation advisory committee. I'll make a motion, may I have a second?
Second.
Alan, do you want to take us through this?
Yes, I seem to have all the good stuff there. The recreation committee, as it's currently set up, is managing the recreation director, who's an employee of the town. And basically, that doesn't work. We want the recreation director to report to the town board. So, this law changes that. It also changes the committee to basically be an advisory committee, basically it's too old to be to create new programs, advise on existing programs, or the town board will have the final say, as it does anyway, but the idea is to clarify the role of the board. What will happen is the old board will be terminated, and a new board will be terminated.
We have to set our local hearing for the next meeting?
This resolution goes up.
Yes, it does. Is there any other discussion?
Yeah, I had a couple of points on it. And I did speak to Warren on some of these. In section 130-2, there's a sentence that said, "Members shall not hold any other position elected or..."
Yeah. What did he say about that?
He said it's not necessary. He just copied another thing, so I think we can, I would suggest we get rid of that.
Oh, yeah, great. His volunteers are...
And I guess the second thing...
Everybody else all right with the change in that? On page, on the second page of this composition and appointment of terms, the change was that, in here, it says that recreation committee members can't be on any other boards or committees, and we wanted to change that so that they can't be.
Just drop it.
You guys all right with that?
Yeah.
The second thing, that this will be an advisory committee, so at the end of paragraph two, we have this elaborate procedure...
I'm sorry, what, where, what paragraph two?
One, section 130-2.
Yes.
I'm not in the resolution, I'm in the local law.
Okay, yep, yep, yep.
It says that if a member misses three meetings or fails to actively participate, that person may be removed by the town board. Then it goes on to say, "upon charges presented by the town board in public hearing." I would get rid of the last part, "upon charges presented to the town board in public hearing." It sounds much too formal for an advisory committee. You know, maybe something like a planning board or a zoning board, but for an advisory opinion.
So, what are you proposing? The whole last, from a member of the recreation committee, that whole last sentence?
No, not the whole last sentence.
Yeah, the phrase that begins with a "pun."
Yeah, "upon charges presented by the town board in public hearing."
Okay. So, remove that and just...
Yeah. And then Warren suggested we add "with or without clause."
Okay.
Maybe remove "by the town board" and add the words "with or without clause."
Thank you.
And then I guess the last is just the question. This has recreation committee advising director. And I don't know if that's what we want, or should the committee just advise the town board? So, maybe we should then go through and take out the references to advising director, and they should just advise the town board.
Is everyone getting agreement with that?
That's what I thought we were going to get.
I did too.
So, we can make these changes and then publish it, these changes.
Okay. Anything else, Joe?
No.
So, we'll modify this and go on to the next meeting.
We'll hold open our, this sets the public hearing for June 27th, so we'll revise this. We'll open the public hearing. We'll listen to public comments and the vote.
We'll publish it as notice of public hearing with these changes.
Yes. Yep. John, you got the changes?
Or I can give it to you.
I have it in my book.
Okay.
Right. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed, so moved. Resolution 2016-166, appointment to the aging committee. I'll make a motion, may I have a second?
Second.
Elaine, you want to?
Sure. I don't have it in front of me, unfortunately. I left my whole folder of information in there.
Tab 13.
But I don't think there's anything in that tab.
They're just the, just the names of it, yeah.
But, well, I mean, the aging committee certainly needs more members. It's had a problem with membership. There's also when the enabling resolution established the aging committee calls for representation in the community in certain sectors, and this person is from the Baptist nursing home, and seems like a perfect fit for somebody on the aging committee, so I think it's a great idea. It'll be helpful to the aging committee.
Pull the enabling thing. I think we have to put some effort into following that, getting...
Yeah, I agree. So, that's basically it.
Great. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. We've appointed Ryan Zidane to the aging committee for a term expiring at the end of this year, so thank you, Mr. Zidane, for serving. Resolution, this is tab 14, 2016-167. I'd like a motion for revising the 2016 seasonal license agreement from the town of Rhinebeck with Farber Brothers, Inc., to use the town's waterfront facilities in connection with a water taxi route between Rhine Cliff and Kingston in New York. May I have a motion and a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I think we have a lot of discussion on this one. There are only a couple of points that were changed from the original 2015 contract, but they were fairly substantive, one being the request, which, at least in our email exchange, you said is no longer necessary, that the town pay for the signage at the dock.
That's correct. I was going to say...
Okay. So, that was one substantive change. The other one was dealing with the dock maintenance and repair, so, and also the storage. And I want to look at the language again. I'm so sorry, because I had all this highlighted in my folder, but give me a moment and I'll find the section in question. Oh, sure, absolutely. If anybody else has any questions in the meanwhile, feel free. I'm going to look through the section.
Do you have Mr. Farber here, who runs the taxi? If anybody has any questions, or did you want to address the board?
Let's hear you answer to those questions.
Thank you.
I have a couple of language things.
You want to get into John?
Yeah. On paragraph nine, in B, the second line where it says "that is knowledgeable," the "is" should be "its," I-T-S. So, it reads "that its knowledge and expertise includes, but not limited to applicable federal and state laws," I mean, that part, the intent. On paragraph 13, the indemnity, these clauses usually say after the word "expense," including reasonable attorney's fees and costs. And I would suggest we add that. This is in paragraph 13, right before the one.
Is everybody all right with that change?
Yeah.
And the last thing, paragraph 22, waiver, I think something is missing, and we want to ask why. It doesn't look like there's, there's usually the thought that failure to insist upon strict performance in one instance doesn't bind forever. I think there's some words missing.
Do you want to check with him on that?
Yeah. Yeah, paragraph 22. That's all I have.
Now, Elaine's still reading. Did you, you had, there were other concerns that we had about the cost of repairing the dock, removing the dock. Does anyone want to address that?
Well, is that an issue for through October 16?
Well, I think it's, but I think it's a good time to talk about it.
Part of the contract issue is, in fact, I already found that part, maintenance and repair. During this period, owner shall be responsible to maintain...
What number is that?
I'm sorry, it's number 10. Licensees shall be responsible to maintain all these vessels and equipment there upon the condition of repair. The licensee represented that it has inspected the current waterfront facilities in the town of Rhinebeck, and that the facilities are in suitable condition for operation of licensee's ferry service. During the term of the license agreement, which is the season, in this case, June 1st through October 12th this year, the licensee shall be responsible for maintenance and ordinary maintenance and repair of the dock, and responsible for repairing any damage to the dock as a result of licensee's operation of the ferry service. So, that means, okay, responsible for maintenance, ordinary maintenance, and repair. Okay, that's not the storage part yet, I'm sorry. There was, in the 2015 contract, there was the section, I believe there was a section that Jeff agreed to restore the boat during the season. The dock, I'm sorry, the dock. Thank you.
It's not in the contract.
Right. Pardon me?
It's not in the contract.
That's not in the contract?
It was a verbal agreement, and I stored it to the company.
Okay. So, okay.
It was a verbal agreement for last year.
Yeah. The owner of the dock was responsible for storing.
Okay, so, well, we're going to have, we're going to talk about that anyway because we have to talk about what we're going to do about the dock because, I mean, we really need a new dock if we're going to continue having that ball.
This is a dock that is, we can use a smaller dock for all of our local pleasure craft for, for all of our, any of our residents who launch boats down and bring them down in a trailer are able to use a much smaller dock. This is a dock, we inherited it, and it's challenging for us to take it out every year and maintain it. It takes a day of our maintenance workers' time along with highway department workers, and I think we've done it in the past with the state highway department, and now it's our town highway department. It's burdensome for us, and really, the only benefit of this dock is for a commercial boat. So, if we were, in my fear and saying is, if we were to replace the dock, we would get something that was easier for us to deal with and less costly.
And I've actually talked to Bobby about that too. Bobby doesn't seem to think the dock is going to make it for another year. And really, I mean, if we're going to continue to have a dock that allows commercial vehicles to tie up, I think we need to talk about investing in a new lightweight aluminum dock, if that's what we decide the direction we want to go in. But I almost think having the maintenance this year, or the storage, rather, is a moot point because we're probably not going to, we're not going to put that dock back in the river next year. We're probably going to get rid of it. I don't know how Bobby intends to scrap it, but, so, that's probably more the issue. I do have other issues, though, that I do want to address, and one of them came up...
Let me just, did you have...
I have an advantage over everyone here. I'm the only one who's actually...
Why don't you come up and introduce yourself?
I'm Jeff Farber, and I am the firm, I'm president of the firm that operates the ferry. I have an advantage over everyone here. I'm the only one who's actually inspected the dock. In order to inspect a dock, you have to remove the aluminum plate, remove some of the floorboards, and stick your head underneath there. I wanted to inspect it, and then I repaired the dock as well. So, I know that it's in good condition. It can last several more years. None of the beams are rotten. So, I don't, I mean, you have to actually look at the thing. There are some, some minor tweaks that always have to be done every year, and that was done this year by me, so...
Unfortunately, our maintenance guy isn't here, and I wish that he were because he's the one who feels that the dock really is not in great shape.
I respect his opinion, but on the other hand, I am an engineer. I inspected the, inspected the dock carefully. That means moving the floorboards and sticking my head underneath there. And so, there were some problems. They were fixed. There was a pair that I assumed it could go another couple of years. There's no rock on the dock.
Yeah, I should probably have Bobby call you directly because I really don't know. I don't know enough about the dock. I'm not an engineer, but Bobby feels pretty strongly that the dock's not in great shape and isn't going to make it another year. So, probably best to put you two in touch because he can tell you directly what he's referring to, and, you know, you can describe to him why you don't agree with that. But that is his recommendation and determination, and he's our...
I respect him and I understand, but it has to be a data-driven exercise. He doesn't have the data, and I do. So, I mean, I'm glad to show him...
Well, let's, we can argue about this all night, but let's, so let's not. The point is that we want to get through this here with the contract, and we want to figure out what we want to do going forward or not. Do we just want to make this this season and then see where it goes?
There are just, there are a couple of things that are really problematic, though, in my opinion, and one of them came up this Saturday. So, you know, last year when you first came to us, and I've been, I think, one of your biggest advocates for the water taxi. I was thrilled when I found out that you wanted to do it. I was, I was a big supporter on the board to bring you here last year and, you know, really do this, and I love the idea of it still. But where I see that it's problematic is that, and, you know, we had some of this back and forth recently over the usage of the dock because other people are tying up there. And by the way, there is some sailboat that's not typically sailing, some blue sailboat that I've noticed there twice now because I've been going down more often, that's docking there and they're staying there. And I think they're either eating at China Rose or Rikers Hotel, but they leave their dock tied up there for a long time. And my point in saying that is that you have a valid argument, certainly, that, you know, you have contracts to operate the ferry at certain hours on that dock. The problem is, and it's in this contract, and you stated it yourself as well, that it's subject to change. That could happen at any time, and there's only notification on your website. And like I said to you in the email I sent to you, first of all, not everybody has access to the internet. They're not going to be checking hourly to see what changes are happening with the ferry. And the only way to avoid having other people dock at the times that you want to run your ferry is for you to invest in a sign that has your hours. And if you, if you want to modify your hours and you don't want to set schedule, then I don't know how the dock is going to work for you because we can't, in good faith, close it off to the public. It's a town dock. Other people want to go, they want to tie up and pick people up too, and if they can't be told they can't use that dock at all because we don't know what your hours are, you could show up whenever it's more convenient for your schedule. So, I don't know what to do about that because I, see, I'll tell you something. It happens this Saturday, you had advertised, I advertised on your behalf, the ferry hours for Rikers waterfront day, and you had contacted me early in the morning and described your concerns about the weather. I completely understood. You weren't the only one. We lost some vendors. And I said to you, please don't worry. If it clears up, let's keep our fingers crossed. We'll all be in business. And then I never got another email from you again for the rest of the day. You never told me you weren't going to come. We had several people down there asking what a water ferry was. You advertised you were going to be down there, and you just never showed up, and it cleared up at 1:00. The thing lasted till 7:00, and you just never came.
Okay. So, which part do you want me to address first?
Any part you'd like to go.
Okay. So, to organize the traffic on the dock, this is standard procedure for marine operations. You need to monitor channel 16. That's... That's, that's a requirement for commercial vessels, a requirement for the ferry, it's a requirement for everyone tying up on the dock as well. So that's, that answers that.
I'm sorry, you have to monitor what?
Channel sixteen.
It's a requirement. It's not, you know, it's not something that is unknown to members. The next thing is, I have a schedule, I will attempt to stick with it. Now, the Saturday thing, when my weather model said that there was gonna be severe thunderstorms in the afternoon, I told them maybe at eleven-thirty that we weren't gonna operate, and, you know, that was it. And it's, it's an operation, I chose to not operate the ferry.
But you didn't tell me, you hit email me once in the morning to let me know that you were concerned. So I had no way of knowing. I kept telling people that were asking, well, I think he's gonna be here, it was bad in the morning, but he said if it cleared up, we'd all be in business, so...
Always be reached by telephone and also the website.
Yeah, no, Jeff, I kinda think the onus was on you in that case because you were the one who told me you weren't coming.
I apologize for that, and you're probably correct. But I'm trying to push our customers, and customers are acceptable to it, to check the website. The website has the latest conditions. It can change through the wind, it can change through traffic, they can close off the Rhondow Creek to dredge it. It's gonna happen, it will happen over the summer sometime, because they're doing some sort of remediation there. The whole thing's gonna be shut down.
But if you had a sign that had your hours, and then you also updated on your site, at least, at least people would know. Like, I actually wonder if this was the problem with the failure of the last water ferry because I never understood why it didn't work because it's such a great idea. And people told me there were problems with the marketing, that's what I heard. And it seems to me that if you don't have, if people don't know that you're a business coming down there at certain hours to transport them, how are they gonna support you? I, I know that when I tell people about what you're doing, they love the idea, but, but nobody knows whether it exists.
It's a, it's a valid criticism, and you can easily put a sign with the hours. That can, it has to be, it could be changed. You know, if we'll have a sign and it's hours gonna change, we can change that. But we, we have a set schedule, and it's now to get as many of the Amtrak passengers as possible. So that's a change for this year. We, there's something called the Rhine Cliff Rocket, I don't know if you're aware of that. It's a train that comes up from New York City, the first stop is Rhine. We wanted to capture the passengers coming off of that train, six, six thirteen, I think it comes in. So we should, we alter our schedule slightly to do that. So that was the main, that was really the only change. Took up a morning, a morning run and put in the Rocket, the Rocket run. So that was it.
Is there, you wanna use, you wanna be able to use the, you wanna continue with the agreement for this year?
Yeah, and there's minor, just minor changes.
And do you agree that we can do it this summer with minor changes?
Oh, yeah, I think if he gets a sign because, because he brought the problem to me about other people using the dock during designated hours, and the only way I can think to rectify that is the website's not gonna be enough.
And we don't, and we don't have the ability to...
Monitor people.
To enforce that. So just so you know that, we have no...
No, it's okay. If, if there's a sign on the dock that says, "Please monitor channel sixteen", and that is, that's a legal requirement, and every man has to do it, that'd be fine.
So you'll do your own sign and bring it to us? You'll give us, you know, to Elaine, the proposed sign, and we can approve it and get it up?
Right.
Yeah, I think it would be great.
The contract actually has proposed language, which I think is okay. And, and it has an addendum, "Please monitor channel sixteen", and then I can add the schedule.
Joe, did you have questions about that?
Well, no, not for this year. Obviously, at some point, the dock would be replaced.
It has to be.
And my pro...
What? It has to be.
Yeah.
Sometimes.
And my problem is with the whole concept. We have sunk in through 2012 with the previous ferry operator who obviously couldn't make the financial goal of twenty-four thousand bucks. I think it took them a waste of money. Since that time, I don't know how many more thousands we put in. We have never gotten from anybody an idea of how many people use this thing. And although some people think it's a great idea, I don't think it's a practical idea. I don't think many people are gonna use it, so I would love for you to give us some data on these.
Okay, I prepared, I prepared something for you. So without getting into the financial aspect of exactly, I had about, about fifty passengers using February last year. Not all of them transported across the Hudson. So, um...
I'm sorry, not all were transported?
Sure, quite a person. Some of them were on the Rhondow.
So fifty total?
Yeah, fifty total, so roughly. And so we have some traffic that stays on the Rhondow, which actually works out pretty well because there's a lot of stuff going on over there. But we had about, so we had about roughly twenty-five to thirty passengers that transported themselves on the ferry.
Back and forth.
Back and forth.
Last year.
It's terrible, but on the other hand, it's something, it's not zero.
If you could build it, and I, I think that we should stick with talking about this contract for this year. And, you know, we, the dock may last another couple of years, the dock may not last, and we can cross the dock when we get to.
One could say we could cross the bridge.
One could. But we would, but then why would we need a ferry?
There's a bridge.
Why would we need a ferry? Elaine, do you have any other...
Yeah, the only thing, there's two changes that I would like to make to the, um, the new contract. One is to, I wanted to be clear that the signage, the cost of the signage should be your responsibility as private business owner, not ours.
Just cross out, um, town Rhine Cliff, or license fee?
Town Rhinebeck.
Yeah. And then the, uh, the other thing is, under Schedule B with the docking requirements.
What, what number is that?
It's Schedule B, it's at the end, it doesn't have a number, it's the schedule at the very last page.
Yes, yes.
Yep.
Okay, number two, docking requirements. The last sentence says, "Signage provided by the licensee will be placed on a dock by licensee that declares the ferry has priority to land on the dock and that all other vessels must leave the dock during the ferry docking operations." I'm not comfortable with that, it's so vague. I think it should be docking hours of operation.
You say scheduled, scheduled time.
Scheduled, that's fine, I have no problem with scheduled because otherwise this means the owner's operating, he has access, and other people don't.
So we can all agree on these changes? All right, is there any other discussion? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, Jeff.
My pleasure.
All right, um, all in favor?
I'll see you guys on the ferry.
I hope so.
We just have to know what time you're gonna be there.
We'll check the website. It's the last one this year.
It's the ferry before the wooden bridge.
We're way too young for that, yeah.
I will tell you that the ferry...
Well, not all, everybody, okay. Is there any, any further discussion on this? We're all in agreement, Johnny, of the changes we need to make? You'll get them from Elaine, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so move. Okay, I think we've gotten through the resolution part pretty unskated here. We have a couple of presentations, which I'm taking out of order, I'm taking them in the order of people who have come. Sally, are you here for anything in particular?
No.
Just for fun? Just for fun, okay. I'm going to go to item number two, Rhinebeck at Home on Senior Transportation, tab fifteen. Nyla Lynn, come on up.
Hello, everyone, I'm Nyla Lynn, President of Rhinebeck at Home. I thought we'd start by saying Rhinebeck at Home was created as a direct result of the 2011 survey mailed to town residents over age sixty by the Town Committee on Aging. Since then, it has developed into a viable member of organization for those in Rhinebeck who aspire to the goal of neighbors helping neighbors stay independent at home. As part of discussion to our Rhinebeck at Home, and Rhinebeck is aging, can we meet the challenge of that in April 2015? Several people expressed interest in looking more closely at what transportation options exist for older adults here in Rhinebeck. We, Rhinebeck at Home, have decided to look specifically at existing transportation choices and possibilities and offer you the results so that as you decide how the town van will be managed, you will have a wider range of information to draw upon. Rhinebeck at Home is not offering to run the town van or to operate a transportation system, but we will explore existing options, seek information from service providers, attempt to identify gaps in services as perceived by older adults here in Rhinebeck, and provide you with the results of our work. I sent a proposal, did anybody get that?
Yep.
Okay, so, there you have it.
I think it's, I think it's wonderful.
I think it's incredibly generous.
Yeah, it really is. You have so much to be appreciated.
The senior van is something that we have that's, I think, very, it's somewhat underutilized, you know? We run it twice a week, we could run it more. What we do need help with is, you know, and you'll, you're going to get a lot of information from us, which will be helpful.
Yes.
But just to state now, we have our clerks scheduling, people call the town clerk's office to ask for rides, and our clerks schedule them. What we're having difficulty with is finding, identifying drivers and scheduling the drivers. So really, the van can be used for anything. We want it to be used for, for seniors, and, and it should be because it's a great resource. I did tonight, just before the meeting started, I got a letter from Susan Davidson, the Executive Director of Friends of Seniors. And she said that she understood that there was an issue or a problem with the van here, and unfortunately, she couldn't be here, she had to be in Millbrook. But she sent a lot of information about the rides that they provide here, and I know that they're on your list. I'll copy Elaine on it, and I'll answer her, you'll be in touch, and there really isn't a problem. We're looking to broaden our information gathering.
Great.
Does anybody have any questions, or...
In that connection, and the Rhine Cliff Water Day, I met a member of the Red Hook Town Board who said that she understood that we had a van, and they would love, according to her, and I think she was speaking personally, to maybe use it also. It may be something, and I suggested she approach Elizabeth.
Her van.
With it, it may be a way, if it's not utilized that much, to defer some costs and get some revenue or support. But see if they ask us, and then we can figure out whether we wanna do...
Great, we can certainly talk to anybody. I'm in favor of trying to expand our services for seniors, but, you know, what this, Laura Davidson, is that the name? Right, Susan, I'm sorry. She did send me a report, which I'll forward to everybody, about all the pickups they do. And it's pretty, you know, there are some people on here who looks like, you know, they have to go to doctors all the time. So, yeah. Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Nyla. Thank you. We have a presentation from the Committee on Aging. Sorry, I'm just sort of taking these in order by remember how the requests came in to bear a meeting. Everybody said thanks for your patience.
There were so many of them.
Yeah. I know, last request.
And I'm addressing this current issue. My name is Marcia de Blazin, I'm the Chair of the Rhinebeck Committee on Aging. And this transportation issue has been ongoing, particularly from day one. And, but I, first of all, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak and for the evening. When the caregiver, the, we, as I said, we have had this as an ongoing issue. So we have been exploring for years the thing, so...
Are you talking about the van, Marcia?
I'm talking about transportation issues for seniors in town. Currently, the caregivers have absorbed the riders that, as Susan mentioned in the letter, that were being given by the caregivers. We have three nursing homes, they each have transportation for their residents. So our committee is sort of the go-to place for information and planning. So we have kind of done this on an ongoing basis. We've done two surveys, neither of which showed that the respondents had felt there was a need for transportation. I totally agree with you about expanding the van. However, I feel that the Committee on Aging is the proper place for this kind of information gathering.
Well, I think we've just accepted, well, I'll speak in a twenty-one. I think we've just accepted, Rhinebeck at Home is a pretty, you know, vigorous, and, you know, I think we've accepted that they're going to do a survey for us. We're not going to do it, we can present the information to anyone, anyone will have access to that information. So, you know, are you asking us not to let Rhinebeck at Home do this?
I'm just saying that the Committee on Aging has had an ongoing history of transportation issues.
Okay, great.
And so we are, some of these questions that have been asked, we've already gone into them.
Okay, thank you.
Well, am I correct that you indicated, trashy question?
Please.
Okay. Am I correct? My understanding, what you said is that the committee has gathered information and that the information that you've gathered indicates that there really is not a need for the van?
No.
Oh, okay, I misunderstood.
I'm sorry if I didn't make that clear. The other thing I wanted to address is the Red Hook issue.
No, but stay with the first one.
Okay. And then we can do...
So the information you...
I totally agree, the van needs to be expanded, and there needs to be better organization of recruiting of drivers and having a coordinator.
And the information you've gathered is that people think there is a need for the van?
We feel that there are, there's one thing that the board has approved that we've been trying to put in place, which is a trip to the nursing homes for people who have a difficulty driving or getting there to visit or to volunteer. And we're trying to get that up and running. And there are certain events in town that I think would be wonderful to be able to go to the plays at the high school and on Sunday afternoons and that kind of thing.
So what's the barrier to that happening? What's the, what are the barriers?
Last year, we were asked to appoint a senior corp, senior, I'm sorry, a van coordinator. We gave the board a name.
And it didn't work out?
Yeah.
We need the infrastructure to expand this, and I think we need as much, we need as much help as we can. That's why we're, you know, Rhinebeck at Home is one of the biggest, um, groups of sen... It is the biggest group of seniors in the town.
And they've proven themselves really effective, and, and what a great model, and they're willing to do this on volunteer time. I don't know how anybody can refuse that. It's only gonna help all of us, including your own goals for the Aging Committee. I think it's, I think it's a wonderful addition.
The other thing I wanted to address was the question you had about Red Hook. I've met with the Red Hook, their, their equivalent of the Committee on Aging. And it was the understanding when the town acquired the van that it was with funds that were to be used only for Rhinebeck. So I've worked with the Red Hook Aging Committee on finding a way of organizing their own transportation system.
Any other? Thank you.
Thank you, Marcia.
I just wanna segue into the green initiative and the senior newsletter discussion item, if that's okay.
Yes.
Elaine, I know you didn't, you didn't bring your notes, I can't find them, I can't hunt.
I can remember pretty well. We had a lot of discussions about it.
Yeah.
There, you know, I don't know the numbers exactly, but I know that we're over the percentage of what our copier can handle before it needs to be serviced again, and we have a service contract, and we exceed that every time. And the, um, the printing of the newsletters, there's a tremendous number of newsletters printed. I know it's caused copier breakout malfunctions before. I know the clerks have gone crazy before trying to keep up with the workload because there are so many of them, and there's so many pages. It just seems to be a lot of paper going out that may not be necessary, and...
The one, the one number I have is that the newsletter uses twenty-eight percent of the allotted copies that we're, that we're allowed to do under contract. And what brought this up was that we've had other people, where newspapers are going out of business here, we've had other groups contact us about doing newsletters, and I can't support it. And if I can't support that, I have to ask you to relook at how you're going about this. It's, the production of the newsletter has been a bump in the road for the clerks, and it's hindered us from doing other townwide stuff that we'd like to do, whether it's things that go out with our taxes. It's the twenty-eight percent that got us.
How many copies is that?
It's close to thirty thousand a year. We're allowed a hundred and twenty-something, a hundred and twenty-three, and, and they're doing about thirty thousand copies a year. So, well, the alternative is to do this electronically and to not do so much paper.
I limited the number of print copies that go out.
Yeah, yeah. Carol Blum, the author of the newsletter, which is a great newsletter. It's not, to me, I'm sorry, Lee, uh, to me, it's not the, it's the production of it that I'm, I'm taking issue with.
I'm Carl Lee. I write the Growing Older Rhine Beck Newsletter. I have a statement that I want to make, after which I tend to address any questions you have about the printed newsletter. The Committee for Seniors produces a 32-page online newsletter twice monthly. I have a distribution list of over 200 seniors and service providers for this document. The oldest of our seniors who are not online get printed copies of an abbreviated version of the newsletter once monthly. These copies are distributed around Rhine Beck in areas where the oldest of our residents might find them. Wells Matters, CBS, The Gardens, The Woods, The Star Library, Arbor Ridge, Fern Cliff, The Performing Arts Center, The Upstate Theater, Northern Duchess Hospital Lobby, a few doctor's offices, The Center for Healthy Aging, The Bridge Club at the Church of the Messiah, Stock and Shops, and the LLI. The number of copies printed varies from month to month based on several factors. If LLI is in session, it's based on the number of copies left at each drop place when the new copies are distributed. In the beginning, there were some copies left over, but at this point, the old copies are gone when we distribute the new ones. So we feel that the numbers that we leave at each place are appropriate. The total number of copies printed is about 300 monthly. John can tell you the exact number he prints each month. Suggestions have been made by Elaine Fernandez that copies of the printed newsletter should be posted around time, around town for seniors to read instead of printing them. The printed newsletter contains six sheets of paper printed on both sides. Other than the difficulty of finding a place to post them, the idea of the eldest of Rhine Beck seniors, those who are not online, standing outside somewhere jotting down dates, times, and locations of events in which they are interested, as well as phone numbers to register for events, is impractical and unworkable. We live in a community that is aging. The number of children enrolled in our schools has been decreasing steadily as the senior population is increasing. However, most of the resources of the community are channeled to the school population. The only services that the town extends to seniors are the maintenance of the senior van, the scheduling of rides to the van, and the printing of the newsletter. The town of Rhine Beck should be able to afford the printing of the newsletter as a minimal service to our senior population.
Thank you.
I'd like to say something, if you don't mind. That was a suggestion that I made as one thing. Just as I said a moment ago, the other suggestion was printing a limited number of copies. It wasn't meant to be just a posting somewhere. It was just a suggestion that maybe we could talk to some places that have very public areas where the information could also be distributed, so there wouldn't have to be so many copies printed. In addition to a limited number of copies printed, just because there are so many copies printed and it's creating these other problems. One thing I wonder is when you say that at some of these drop-off points, you go back and the newsletters are gone, I wonder how much of that is the places, the owners of the places where they're being dropped, get rid of them at a certain time when they're not moving? And the only reason I wonder that is because I know that that's common practice for a lot of people because there's a lot of free materials that get distributed to a number of places. And I happen to be a frequent guest at The Center for Performing Arts, one of your delivery spots, and I don't think I've ever seen the newsletters there. And I know I was on a recent email exchange where there was discussion about the number of non-center pieces of information that were left there. So I guess I would be very interested in knowing from those outlets, if you could leave that with us, the public record. I would be happy to contact each one of those outlets myself to have a conversation with them. You know, how many are people actually taking versus do you, you know, do you get rid of them at a certain point? I mean, because they're not there when you go back, doesn't mean that they're being picked up by all the seniors. And I think that having senior services in the town is really important. And I think the newsletter is a really good thing. But I do think we have to address this issue. It's not a small one. So it's like, how do we do it in a way that can still work for you and for the town?
I understand. In the beginning, when we started distributing in these locations, we distributed a standard number to every place. And then when we came back the next month, there were always a few left. So the next month, we distributed that number less there. And in a few months, we came to a point at which the numbers were pretty flat. We were dropping off enough newsletters to satisfy the people who were picking them up.
How did?
I know that when I distribute newsletters at LLI, I take 25 copies with me and they're gone in an hour. So I assume that that's happening everywhere.
Yeah, I would like to, I'd like to find out. I think it would be helpful for your committee and also for us. And just a part of our due diligence to see, you know, if they are being used. I mean, if that many people are really taking them and it's a service that's helping people, then I think that's a wonderful thing.
The other thing is, why can't LLI make copies? Why can't the hospital make copies? It seems ridiculous that we're, you know, that this is an issue, but it is an issue because it's something we can't accommodate for our copier and everything.
I know, it's an organization that takes.
Okay, but the hot, I mean, I guess we'll see and Elaine will copy them. And we have to cut down. It's hindering us from doing other town business. And I also don't agree that there aren't services we don't offer. We try and offer services to all people. Certainly, we offer recreation services for older people, you know, we have.
I have a lot of problems with the recreation services you offer to seniors.
Well, we have been begging for people from the aging committee to come on the rec committee because the rec shouldn't only be for kids. We are one of the oldest towns in the county and we need, we need that. So that's something we've asked for you to help us with.
We have met with representatives from the committee several times.
You know, we can, and we're trying to get older people to come on the committee because it's not just about ball fields. It should be about, you know, movement and whatever older people need. And I'm almost a senior citizen myself. I think we have, I think, I think the majority of us up here are. I'm in, you know, AARP.
Eight years old.
Yeah, you, you're the youngster. So.
Our experience has been that the recreation committee has not been forthcoming.
Well, we have a rec director. You can work with our rec director directly and we're open to doing whatever anyone wants.
You know, Elizabeth, I just add to that. I, you know, at the Rhine Cliff Waterfront Day, Alice and I were talking about recreation broadly, you know, programs, ideas she has. She's a wonderful director and she has a lot of really good ideas and she's very good at executing that. And she had mentioned in passing that she had gone to your committee twice in hopes of working with you guys on programs to help seniors and that nothing really came of it, that there was just a lot of talk about a lot of other things that there didn't seem, can you come up with a? So, I mean, I think that there is, I think the town has been trying, continues to try to find ways to be helpful and especially where recreation is concerned too.
I have one other question. Are you done?
Yeah.
How did the newsletter, hold on, Marcia. How did the newsletter come about? Because it's not in the charge of the committee. This isn't what the committee was charged with. We all agree it's a great thing, but that's not why the aging committee was set up.
First of all, to respond about Alice, she canceled that trip. We were coordinating a trip with her to, what is it? What's the place again? Saratoga Springs.
Well, knowing Alice, I think.
And she canceled it. And that's why nothing came about.
Well, let me just say to you though, knowing Alice, something probably came up and maybe she wanted to.
That's fine, but you're intimating that we dropped the ball.
No, no, I'm just reporting that I was told that she came to your committee twice.
Talking about ongoing programs too.
You know, more important thing is, and I think Elizabeth made a really good point a moment ago, when she said, why is nobody, why are there no seniors on the rec committee? I mean, the rec committee is a meeting. It's how, you know, I mean, if you could really use.
We have three people on the rec committee.
Like broad support. It would be a wonderful thing if one of you guys were on the rec committee.
That's sort of up to the rec committee to.
No, it's not. It's up to.
No, it's like anything else.
Well, consider yourself recruited.
Yeah. Carol, would you join? Yeah.
Seriously, we need our own members. And with, in terms of the newsletter, the newsletter arose from a survey we did in 2008 of the seniors in Rhine Beck. And it was a quality of life, self-selected survey. And we had various issues. And one of the responses was, I didn't know about it. For example, arts opportunities, volunteer opportunities, et cetera. That's how the newsletter arose out of that because there was, the largest percent of responses was that people were not aware of what was available. So that's how the newsletter arose.
So can I ask you, how many people are on your emailing list? How many people get your electronic newsletter? How many?
I have over 200 people. May I say one more thing?
Yeah, sure.
In terms of the printing. Over the years, we have offered to take it elsewhere and get a sponsorship. And we get set to do that and then the town says, no, that's fine, go do it.
Absolutely, get a sponsor and let's do it. I'm telling you right here publicly, we're, I'm going to move to limit the number of copies because of paper waste and because of the wear and tear on our, we are unable to do a townwide mail, you know, mailer without blowing us out of our contract. We can't do it.
Well, my stop.
Hold on, I'm gonna, hold on, let me finish. Elaine's gonna look into it and we'll come up with a number. You know, this isn't punitive. This is just, we're trying to be sensitive to our resources, the earth's resources, and to what we need.
Only paper waste is the pay if the newsletter isn't being used.
Well, I mean, I'm saying, let's get a sponsor and do it because the town cannot, you know, we've had, we've had a broken copier twice in the past couple of months here, just doing it.
Let me just say, so a couple of things. If I take your numbers, she saw, what Carol said was about 22,000 copies a year, not 30,000, so that's.
I said 24.
I thought you said 30,000.
No.
I wrote down.
It's 28%.
It's six pages double sided, that's 12 pages.
Okay, but.
It's 12 times 300.
All right, fine. So we're locking in about $1,000, that's $1,500 worth of printing if you take the Kinko's or Staples, is what I would do. And it seems to me that $1,000 a year is not asking too much for the town to spend on seniors for a newsletter.
Where are we gonna get the?
Go ahead.
But I think the idea of sponsorship, you know, you go to the software, they got commercial businesses on the back of their sweatshirts. I think that's a great idea, that you go to some local merchants who want to advertise and maybe pay the cost of it. Also, I don't know how detailed this is. Can you save space by writing?
I brought copies, I brought copies with me, so.
When does, when does the next newsletter come out, Carol?
The printed newsletter comes out the first of the month.
It's no large type, or even. Pretty small.
Yeah.
I go through the online newsletter and compress it.
I have one, thanks. Have them all. Great, so this is something we could look at for our next meeting. Do you think you can call everybody before the next meeting and see if they'll be willing to copy? Yep. Carol, do we have your letter for our records?
But can we solicit, can you or your group solicit some merchants as to whether they would sponsor it? They would have their name in it?
I'll try and try to, for more support. I've had issues in the past with being allowed to have sponsors. If you guys say it's okay, there's definitely, I think enough research has now tried to do that. So really, if you guys could come back to us and say, we can advertise on a document like this. It's a good format. You know, we probably got, we could book them bucks a year, maybe. Keep it same format, copy, copy documents. These things get out and they're used. I've seen them emptied out in the hospital a couple of times.
Yeah, we're not saying they're not. We're saying we need help. It's a stress on.
Really, if you could, if you get the okay to get the sponsorship, you know, I think we could get around to get that. But we need direction for that, right, right. You guys are glad, it's a great thing. So I have another topic related to seniors. That's okay in transportation program. You guys have done that.
Sorry?
So I'm here to talk about the van.
Oh, hold on one second.
I think you want to move on with that.
We've done it already, but let's close this out. Carol, did you have anything else for us?
No, are there any other questions you have to make?
No, I think what we've decided we're going to do is we're going to go through and copy these people, see who could do it. We'll talk to Warren to make sure we can get sponsorship. We'll come back to you and, you know, we'd like to just have the burden lessened on our town resources by the next.
I think it would be great if we kept, if we could get a sponsor.
Yeah, good. Thank you. Thanks for coming and thanks for the newsletter.
So can I just repeat these names to make sure I'm getting everybody? It's Wells Matters, CBS, The Gardens, The Woods, The Star Library, Arbor Ridge, Fern Cliff, The Performing Arts Center, The Upstate Theater, Northern Duchess Hospital Lobby. When you say a few MD offices, can you give me those names? I'll need those names.
Yeah.
The Center for Healthy Aging, The Bridge Club at the Church of the Messiah. Is that a place or is that a bunch of people? Is that a?
It's a bunch of people who move weekly. They're all seniors.
Okay, so can you give me that number as well? And then the few MD offices? Stock and Shop. And I'm sorry, what's LLI?
Lifelong Learning at Bar.
Oh, that's the lifelong learning program, okay. Yes, actually, some of these places are perfect matches for what you're doing, but others like CBS, The Performing Arts Center, that's, those are where I wonder, like if they're, if anybody's really using them.
We'll look into it and we'll discuss it at our next meeting. We'll look into sponsorship with our attorney and we'll go from there.
So Carol, I'll email you just as a reminder with what, exactly what information I need from you from this, so I can follow up with them because I'll need numbers and contact information.
Thank you for coming.
That'd be great, thank you very much.
Seal, did you have a comment? Oh, I'm sorry, Donna, yes, Donna, sorry.
If I may, I just have a.
Could you come up?
Just as a point of information, LLI, Lifelong Learning at Bar, has 265 members, 268 actually. And of the, we are actually going electronic increasingly. And of the 200, we have members ranging in age from like 58 to 98. And 11 of them do not have email. So progressively, everyone has moved towards email.
I.
And that's, I'm just saying, we are, we are also.
I find that and I've gotten the information from Rhine Beck at Home. I had, you know, my grandmother was one of the oldest members in Rhine Beck until she passed away. She was online, so.
It doesn't mean that some people don't want the hard copy, but that's the way that we can efficiently act.
Thanks, thanks, Donna.
Lance?
Tom's before you, I think.
It's totally unrelated to what I'm talking about, but it is senior related. It talks about the van. The van is of course having a paint issue, it's a manufacturer defect. We looked into it last year.
Is this a non-agenda item?
Uh, yeah.
I'm gonna ask that you hold it until the end. I want to stay on schedule. Is this a non-agenda item?
This is in response to what Carol was talking about. I am on the rec committee. My name's Linda Murray and I just want to be able to look at you, Carol, when I'm talking. We have talked about doing both a cooking class for seniors, particularly for a social event, and coordinating with the town of Mylan because they have a wonderful kitchen out there. And it was actually, I think it was last year or so, I went out there to speak with the town supervisor out there and they were very interested in doing a cooking class for seniors. And we were also, one of the main topics we talked about for seniors, and really, many people, is crocheting or knitting and coordinating with Stickles in town or even Jo-Ann Fabrics, perhaps even using the school district and using their sewing machines, depending upon the level of interest for the seniors. So even though we don't have representatives from the senior and the aging committee, we are thinking about you. We really are. And we do care about every age group in our community. And we're not just focused on the children. We care about that you're socializing and that you're out there cooking and doing activities to keep you healthy and. and well.
Thanks, Linda.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I, we'll actively get some, you know, and I, some members for the rec committee, but thank you. Anything else on this? Okay, finally, I'm sorry, cemetery committee, sorry, thanks for your patience.
Stan, we got napped in.
Yeah, really. Sorry, it's, it's a big meeting.
Hi, Suzanne Lee, Cemetery Committee Chair. So, as you know, we have two stone walls at the cemetery, the old part of the cemetery, one on Route Nine and one on the road. For the last several years, we've been looking at what it will take to restore those. You probably have noticed that they are both falling apart. These are a few photographs. So, right now, we're focusing our attention on the wall on Route Nine, because we're just gonna do it one at a time. And we've talked with a number, a number of engineers, a number of stonemasons, and we've come up with this specs. So, this, the, the stone wall you can see, it was built actually in the eighteen eighties, and so, we don't really have a real sense of how long it lasted until it started falling apart. From all reports, it looks like probably about a hundred years, it started falling apart probably about thirty years ago. Uh, and so, we had a lot of conversations about how best to repair this wall, restore this wall, in talking with structural engineers and stonemasons. And so, we basically have moved toward a restoration model. Um, the, the wall, as you can tell here, is a retaining wall, at least a good portion of it is a retaining wall. The rest of the wall is a freestanding wall, as you get closer toward the end where the gates are. That part is actually pretty much structurally intact, so these specs basically are about restoring the wall from where it begins with the retaining wall onward. So what the specs actually reflect is, is a lot of what you'll see in, in the photos in terms of the way that it was built. So it is a restoration job that we're proposing here, in keeping with a lot of the other stone walls in Reinbeck. There are many stone walls in Reinbeck that were built just like this, there's a rubble core, and then on the outside you have the stones that face it and are on the top. Uh, the problem with this wall is that there was no drainage put in this wall when the wall was built. So these specs reflect drainage that's put in the back of the wall and then drainage pipes that will go out throughout the wall. Um, that was recommended by all the engineers that we talked to and all the stonemasons. They were lucky enough, we are lucky enough, as you know, to have on our cemetery committee, uh, a physical engineer, Dave Queen, so he actually put together these specs for us. So we have that expertise all done for free. Um, so, anyway, there they are, I have maps, I have specs for you, there are rolling free copies that we had made up for you to review yourselves.
Suzanne, do you have a approximate figure?
Yeah, so, we've gotten, oh, I should, why is it that? So, price range estimates. So we also have gotten price range estimates for this particular, we also got price range estimates for, for a different kind of a wall, a wall actually that would have a concrete core, and we decided against that, even though these, these are the two that we proposed. That one would cost as much, in terms of our price range estimates, as much as two hundred thousand dollars. This one would probably be between about one twenty and one forty, based upon the estimates that, the price range estimates that we received. We put together the specs because we wanna go out for bid. Um, so we are, we, we are recommending that the town board move to go out for bid.
How, what, what funds would we use to pay for this?
Yeah, so what the town, I mean, we need to discuss this, but basically.
We can't go out for bid unless we know we have the money.
Right. So, um, this is where we're proposing to use the money from. So we are, we, we do have enough money from the money that we got from the permanent maintenance fund, maintenance fund, that money, that would cover the entire wall. The cemetery committee is not proposing to use all that money. We would like to use a portion of that money and apply for matching grants through these funders that we've already, um, you know, we already know who we're gonna apply the grant, apply for these grants through. Uh, so, and that should cover it, and then money's from the Friends of Reinbeck Cemetery.
Um, I'm sorry, how many linear feet, fence are we talking about here?
The wall. I don't remember.
Three twenty-five.
Three twenty-five.
And I have the price range estimates, I can, you know, to you.
Would you apply for a grant before you go out with the, uh?
And that's something that I think that you need to advise us on, I'm not sure if the best.
It's my understanding that we have to have the funding together before we go to, I think we're legally, if, we're saying when we go out to bid that we have the money and we wanna do this project.
Yeah.
We need the money. We need to, uh, you know, if we had a construction bid and knew about what we were talking about, but I think you've done that.
But we do, I guess the thing is that we do have the money. We have the money right now to pay for the wall if we don't get these grants.
From the permanent maintenance fund.
That's right.
Well, but how do we maintain the, isn't the permanent maintenance for permanent maintenance?
No, the permanent maintenance fund, we have a capital fund already, we have, we have two funds, we have an operating fund and we have a capital fund. And the permanent maintenance fund was just, was the fund money of the two accounts that we just had, got released through the courts. And so, we have enough money in there to pay for this entire wall from that money. I, I would propose that we don't use all of that money, that we use a portion of that money, it's up to the town board to decide how we actually pay for this wall. Uh, I think that we should pay for, I think that we should try to get grants to, to pay for part of the wall.
Okay.
Um, but, having said that, we do have enough money to pay for the wall. So, I don't really know because I haven't, I've never done this before, I've never gone out for bid before, this is something that I assume that you folks have done before. Uh, so, it's really up to you to tell me how we should proceed, but I also, I, I do know that when we're applying for these grants, I need to be able to tell, right, the funders exactly how much the wall is gonna cost, they're gonna need to know that. And I don't know if we need to bid first, we don't want to tell them that.
No, you get a construction bid. You don't, you don't bid things out to find out how much it's going to cost, you bid things out.
We already have those.
Because you want to get a project done.
We got them, we already have them.
How much are the friends gonna put in?
We don't know yet. It depends how much, it depends how much, um, how much grant money, matching grant money we get.
Elaine, do you wanna talk to Warren and, or how do you wanna handle this?
I should say also, I just wanna make a case also for the wall. Everybody that we've talked to about this wall, um, you know, of course, the wall looks terrible. It is the gateway to the town, the wall is falling apart, the wall needs to be repaired, and the wall is also a safety hazard. Every single person that looked at, has looked at that wall has talked about it really being.
The wall needs to be fixed.
It needs to be fixed, yeah.
There's no question.
We're, we're, I don't think anyone's disagreeing with you. I think we're talking here about procedure and how to go about it and, you know, um, looking at funds and funding grants and stuff like that.
So maybe asking Warren how much, what percentage of the permanent maintenance we should?
I think we have to look at it, I think we need to get all of our figures before it and have it as a, you know, big discussion item, you know, work, put some work into it, whether we do it at the meeting or the next meeting. We, we need to put work into this in advance to look at it and decide how we wanna go forward and.
And you guys have already identified the, the grant, the sources of, of, right?
Yeah.
Oh, great, okay.
Yeah, and so, we'll apply for those soon.
Sally, I saw you making a, I mean.
Yeah, I'm wondering if it's local money or if you're going for state or county money. Because if you're going for state or county money, the concern about reimbursing, you can't start a project, uh, and then expect them to pay for work that is happening. So you have to be very careful about.
You have to get the, you have to get the grant first.
We hadn't identified any state money. But we're, but we, but we could. But those weren't, those weren't the funders we were looking to, they were local.
Would you be willing to, to coach that one?
Sally's an expert on.
Yes, we'll take any advice.
Granting.
Yeah. We would, we would like to.
So thanks, we'll put some work into this and we'll, I mean, what's the timeframe? Because is this, uh?
We'd like to start this in the spring.
Oh, okay, so it's not, it's not before the winter, it's after.
No, but, you know, everything takes a long time.
It's a lot of good lead time, so thank you.
And I know, because we've, look, we've been looking at this for years and we've, we've, we've talked to engineers and, and stonemasons throughout the years, and they have all said that they, you know, they need a lot of lead time, they need to know.
No, if, I, I.
This is a serious.
What are, what are the grant deadlines?
Uh, they're, they're coming up.
I'm telling you.
That's, that's the important thing we need to know, because we're gonna need to make decisions, so they can write in there.
Is this a general fund or a part-town fund of cost? This is a.
What's that?
General fund, is this a general fund?
Sure.
Yeah, so.
It's not part-town? Part, part-town is, uh, town residents outside of the village, only general fund is, uh, everybody in the village and.
Yeah, I see. Yeah, I mean, we'll need to know from you, be, as we work to apply for these grants, how, what, what portion of the permanent maintenance funds?
So send the estimates that you have.
You think that we should use.
Yes.
I think we need to look at all of our numbers.
Yeah, send me, send me everything you have and, um, I'll find out from Warren about the permanent maintenance fund, keep everybody copied on the email. And let me know your grant deadlines, 'cause that's really important, 'cause you guys are gonna need time to write and to do the work that you need to do.
You know, the, um, the county has some, another, like an addendum to the shared services grant, which is to help us with costs that we're facing. We're already applying for three, they, they should be general fund projects, I think, because of the funds balance in our part-town, but that's a whole other thing. I know Joe's disagreeing with me, 'cause we've already identified three things we wanna get funded from the county, but.
Yeah, but this doesn't sound like it's ready by, uh, the end of this month.
Well, but the money's also there.
There's a current deadline.
I mean, you know, the permanent maintenance fund was a wonderful gift to finally get that money released, it had been sitting in there from years prior, it had nothing to do with.
No, maybe this is what we use it for.
Well, exactly, or at least in China, which is exactly what you're proposing, and you're gonna put in your own money as well, starting from.
Speaking for myself, we need to get it done, so I'm, I support it.
Why not do the whole thing? Why do it two phases?
You mean, those are the walls?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good question. The other wall has its own specific problems, and we need a little bit more information about how to address that wall. Uh, do you want me to give you details on that?
Save it for another, we're, we're flipping along here.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not, this one's actually easier to, to restore than the other one, so.
It's easier to go to the wall once.
Well, not necessarily, I mean. If it's problematic, Mickey's like, yes, you know, yes, it is easier.
I mean, I mean, yeah, we could do that.
But, you know, I just wanna say, I really appreciate you bringing it up now, 'cause I thought you wanted to start before the fall, but this is like, this is like great.
No.
So, all right, we'll work with you on it and try and figure it out.
I think this discussion though raises another issue, it's a long-range, uh, issue with how we deal with a municipal cemetery in the future. And, uh, I think we gotta look into what other towns do and what the possibilities are. I briefly talked with Ed and he says that he's willing to work with me, we hope we can enlist you as part of this project, and let's see what other towns do.
What are you, what are you talking about specifically, Joe? Look at what?
I'm talking about how it's run, how it's maintained, it's great we have a permanent maintenance fund, but, you know, that will be used, this may be a very worthwhile project, but, uh, once you use it, unless you replenish it, it, it's gone. And it's very nice to think that generations of taxpayers will pay for my maintenance, but that may not be fair.
Why not?
What?
Why not?
Why not? Uh, because it's a freebie. A lot of cemeteries collect money for permanent maintenance.
But the state, well, we already know from Warren that we can't do that, the municipality is not allowed to do that.
I'm not sure.
He's already, he already advised us on that.
Okay, it, it may be, you may be right, but we at least, we, we at least wanna look, at least I wanna look at it, I wanna look at all possibilities.
You're concerned that there's not enough money for perpetual care going into the future? Is that what you're saying?
That's one of the things, how the cemetery is maintained, we're gonna have a retirement in the next few years, we gotta think about that. I think we ought to think about everything as to.
We can look at whatever you wanna look at, let's, let's, that's, yeah, let's stick with the wall.
The wall.
Let's stick with the wall.
The wall is the wall.
Yeah. Focusing on the wall.
Help on that.
Thank you.
Right.
Thank you.
That's what I'm trying to enlist your.
Yes, I'm here.
And the other thing is, I mean, given that it's a hundred-year time, lifetime for the new wall, why isn't that a capital project?
Well, it is a cap, it is a capital project, we're just funding it through the monies from the cemetery, a capital project is a capital project.
I'm calling this the permanent maintenance fund only because that was the old name of it, that, that is.
It's a capital project.
That fund doesn't really have a name anymore.
Doesn't matter what we call it.
That was the old name, but it belongs to the association.
I would recognize it as a different part of money.
Yeah.
Thanks. Now, um, hold on, Suzanne, I know that we have a couple of issues here, we, we need to make a motion to go into an executive session, um, can you wait for that or do?
Sure.
Okay. Clean up a couple, is that all right?
Yes, well, yeah, Suzanne doesn't mind, it's fine.
We have, we're almost done here.
Yeah.
We have, um, Panda County Grants, a couple of, um, all right, we're, let's do Panda. No one's here, but I told them we could handle it.
I mean, there's really not too, I mean, I guess, well, that's not true, Suzanne, I'll see her. She's the station manager.
Well, the, the specific, the county grant issue.
Yes.
Okay. I have a thing here.
You wanna read it out, that's fine, I was just gonna recap the conversation, so I had her mark her in. But it's a wonderful thing, that'll say.
I think we're asking tonight that the town board approves us to participate in a Dutchess County Municipal Shared Service Grant with the Village of Tivoli as the lead agency in the amount of a hundred and forty thousand dollars, a hundred and forty-nine-eighty. The Panda Municipalities wanna go to the county to get funding for the equipment and the capital, excuse me, items that we haven't been able to get from Time Warner for the past decade, and we don't ever think we will.
Right.
So, uh, part of keeping Panda viable is getting some new equipment and starting up. They're asking us to participate in this shared service grant, so I think we need a resolution, is that, um, allowing me to sign on or a letter, you know, producing a letter that will do this, is that fair?
Yeah, that's exactly right, yep.
So we would advance the money and then reimburse from the county like the other.
The Village of Tivoli would be the lead agency.
No, each participant has to advance the money that they pay.
I think we, I think we would, this is, the, the grants are due and, and before our next meeting, so this is a, a late-breaking thing, I think we're going to do a resolution enable, you know, allowing us to, to do this, and we'll figure out the funding end of it later, if that's all right.
Yeah, you don't have to do, we, we did a resolution, we need the same kind of resolution we did to participate in the equipment purchases.
Is everybody, does anybody wanna discuss this more? I mean, I think we've all said that we're committed to keeping Panda going, you know, Red Hook, almost, the Village of Red Hook had issues, they almost canceled, Town of Red Hook helped them out. We wanna keep this viable, we have no local newspapers, um.
And also help them to get into the twenty-first century.
Yes.
I mean, and it's really, this is important, it's a long time coming, and I think it's a wonderful thing for Panda.
So can we make a?
No, I think it's a great thing, I think the application is due seventeen.
Yeah, that's why we have to get it done tonight. Yeah, that's why we have to get it done tonight.
So why don't we do a resolution right now, authorize a supervisor to sign on...
A letter of intent or a letter stating that we'll participate in the county shared service municipal grants with Tivoli as the lead?
Yep.
All right. I'll second it. You did it, you first and second?
Did I motion it?
Did I motion it? I don't remember. Great, is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So move. So I'm authorized to sign this. We're done, great. I can text David Miller and let him know it's approved. So thank you to David and to Bill Nieves and Elaine. And we'll get this done, hopefully get some money from the county. That was easy. We have some discussion items here. Cell phone for cemetery caretaker, clerical help for cemetery. I think those two are public discussions. Who wants to go with that?
I just forgot, the cellphone, other employees have cellphones that...
Other employees have cellphones, yes. Well, he's supposed to be answering the phone in his office.
Right.
And he doesn't go that far, yeah. He doesn't go that far. I mean, is somebody...
He has his own cellphone because he texts me.
Okay. Does somebody, who's asking for a cellphone?
Go ahead Suzanne.
So Gary has his own cellphone. And there is a phone in the office, but, you know, Gary's not in the office because he's on, he's working in the cemetery. So those folks who need to get ahold of him, like the funeral directors, know to call him on his cellphone. So I guess, you know, my question is, I wonder if we need an office phone?
Excuse me, one second. There's talking in the back of the room. Can you, it's, that's okay, thanks.
I'm wondering if we even need an office phone or if a cellphone would just be...
Well, if we gave him a cellphone, we could eliminate the office phone.
That's kind of what I'm saying. I'm wondering if that just would solve the problem. I mean, I think this is something that you would need to discuss with him. But it seems to me that if the cellphone is on him and that that's the way that the funeral directors get ahold of him, that's the way that I get ahold of him, that maybe it just might be better to just have him just have a cellphone and not have an office phone. But I don't know if that's the best solution, but it seems like a possible solution.
Was there an issue before when people tried to get ahold of him and wanted to make arrangements? They couldn't get him because calling the office phone means they don't have his cellphone, is that right?
No, no, he has, no, his cellphone is not close to it because he pays for that cellphone himself. And that's another thing, you know, he is doing business through his cellphone and he's paying for that himself. He does a lot of business through the cellphone.
I guess that there are two things in my mind though. One is like asking Gary if he wants to walk around with two cellphones or if there was a better system for him to be checking the regular landline more regularly.
Or we could give him an allowance.
I mean, he should, he really should be checking the landline regularly. That's, you know, part of what he needs to do.
Why spend the money for a landline when it's abundant?
I just wonder if that's gonna solve the problem.
Should. See, a lot of people now don't have landlines anymore.
Yeah, no, I know, but it does have a machine there and, you know, there's...
Yeah, but the cellphone takes messages.
Yeah, no, it's true.
Either one or the other.
I mean, I guess I'm just thinking about two cellphones. Like myself personally, I would not want to have to walk around with two cellphones.
You understand, so why not give him an allowance to help him pay for a cellphone?
That's an option too.
We need a cellphone, back to this, we need a cellphone policy.
Yeah.
We do. So I, I think you're right, we don't need two. If, let's talk to him, find out what he'd prefer, and let's work on a cellphone policy.
Yep.
Thanks.
You might as well stay.
Clerical help for the cemetery.
Yeah, we could talk about this...
So I'm sorry, Elaine, you'll talk to Gary or how was I thinking of?
Yes, I will talk to Gary and I'll ask him, you know, if he, how he feels about having a town cellphone.
Or cellphone versus office?
Yeah, versus a landline.
Okay.
So the clerical help, we talked about this before, about possibly getting him some help in terms of filing some of the paperwork. If this might be helpful to him, he had said that it would be helpful. I don't know if there's someone on staff already. I don't know, I mean, I don't know, I don't even know how this would work exactly. But I think that's something maybe, again Elaine, maybe you can talk to him about.
Sure. Like how can Elaine ask what his needs are? Yep, I'll do that for you.
And would it have to be something in the office or could it be done here?
What, is it just filing? Because Shelley gets an allowance for providing clerical services to the cemetery, so...
That's the, she does all the deed transfers.
Right, right, is it, you know, filing, filing, oh, wait there. You know, it's, but talk to him.
I don't think it's filing.
Okay, you mentioned filing. I don't know what he, what he needs. Shelley does the paperwork on the transfers. He is the seller, you know, the plots that's already done, she gets an allowance for it.
Maybe you can talk to him about it.
Yeah, just ask him what kind of clerical help he needs. Yeah, no problem, yeah.
Thanks.
Sure.
Is that the last thing? That is, and then one to executive session?
We'll have to make a motion to go into executive session. We have county grants. Okay, well, I know Joe and I are working on things. Joe is submitting for...
There's three things that I'm working on, possibly two things. One is a vehicle for the building department, the building department vehicle. It's passed its useful life and put an application in. Will either say yes or no.
My, my concern is it's a part-town co, expense and our part-town fund balance is our healthiest balance. We have close to three-quarters of a million dollars in there. And I think I'm all for applying for it. I think we need to look at general fund projects.
Well, I think we should apply for everything that we need, who knows?
Okay, so that's one. The other one is the...
Kitty pool. Apparently Bobby feels that it's sinking and it leaks and he's trying to get a price still at the end of the month.
And that's a general fund cost?
Yeah, if I get a price. The other thing he talked about is the stairs on the bridge across the train tracks.
The Hutton Street Bridge?
Well, I don't know where the Hutton Street Bridge is, whether that's the thing that goes down to the track that cars go on.
The ramp?
Yeah, this is the passenger, to walk to the ramp.
Oh, the trestle, the church, okay.
To go over the tracks.
To go over the tracks. Personally, I'm somewhat dubious about that one.
I'm not even sure we own it.
Wait, Bobby thinks it needs to be repaired, is that what you're saying?
He thinks that sometime in the next few years it will need to be replaced. I myself don't think it's in terrible shape. These people can walk on it.
I walk across it all the time.
I don't know if it is.
Yeah, I know, it's like that one.
Doesn't walk with the MTA?
I don't see anything really loose or bad.
I think...
I'm sorry, I can't hear, let me, we're all talking at once. Elaine, what were you saying? You walked...
I walk across it a lot and, I mean, I don't, I don't see any visible problems with it. But I think it's owned by Amtrak, no?
Hold on, Sally's got some insight, Sally?
It's not owned by the town. I, I know there were like three departments involved with, you know, when we were working on the dock that were involved between Amtrak and State DOT. State DOT may have ownership of that, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we own it.
I know the town does have it.
There's some institutional knowledge that when I first got on board, there was a big discussion about painting and who should paint it.
Well, when's the...
Let me try to finish.
Okay.
Pam Richardson spent hours talking to the railroad and got nowhere on ownership. And it was very unclear as to who owns it. And the railroad was not taking responsibility. So it is not clear-cut that it's not the town's responsibility, that it's the railroad's responsibility.
So they all of these State DOTs, you should talk to them.
Well, let the lawyers do. I'm telling you, Pam spent hours and hours, and I hate to say how much money it cost us, looking at it and really got nowhere on it. The dock, there really is insufficient documentation.
Let's, let's do another swing at it because I don't believe we own it either. Let's do another swing on it because I don't believe we own it either.
Okay, we'll have Warren look at it. I would urge him, maybe your folks, Pam, to see what we'll maybe say.
Okay, so we got the, the truck for the, the, I, I moved that we don't do anything with those stairs. We got the kiddie pool, I'm gonna put in for a road improvement. Do we want to also put in some money for fields, you know, field development? Here's a grant available and we could ask for a sum.
Well, I thought we had volunteers that we're gonna do.
Well, we do, but this is, this is, you know, money that's available and...
Well, you said it's money, it's a finite amount of money. And the question is, how much are you asking for in priority of it? You know, the county is not gonna give us everything we ask for. So we really have to make a priority list.
Well, I, yeah.
And discuss what priorities should be.
I'll get a thing, yeah, we're gonna have to vote on what we're submitting at the next meeting. You know, we clearly heard from people how badly they want the fields. I think it would be like a good gesture to, to try and write some grants that we could get to help this along. It's my feeling. I'm gonna go for a road and for some money for the field. And we'll present them all and decide what we want to do. We have to decide at our next meeting because we gotta get it in.
Right, the deadline is...
July first, yeah. Are we almost done with this? Are there any public comment on non-agenda items? Thanks for your patience.
Well, I'm just bringing up the fact that the van is peeling paint, has been for about a year. It's a manufacturer defect. And we tried to get it resolved through the dealership that we purchased it through. The manufacturer won't fix it for us because they're not the original owner of it, so...
We're not the original owner?
No, we bought it second-hand through Ruby's and Ruby's, you know, graciously gave it to us at cost and whatever. So I've tried to find ways of getting this fixed. At this point, I have Bosse's who stepped up at the plate. They will make it part of their oil program next year. The cost of the paint, you know, that will be incurred from us. So maybe we can get a sponsorship to get that done.
When do you, when do you want to get it done?
Well, I hope to have it done this past year, but they had a new automotive constructor who hasn't worked out. And there's a new one coming, so I have to call the director of business operations next September. But I want to put this in front of you because we're gonna need some funding possibly.
Yeah, well, I mean, certainly, you know, I'd support funding it, we gotta keep it going.
So...
The paint, the, I don't know, the body, I think you need a special building with heat in it. At least whenever we crack up our car, you go to a special, you know, when they got equipment. Does Bosse's have equipment?
Yep, oh, yeah.
I've got the dry, okay.
Oh, yeah.
So I'm not a public official anymore, but they're gonna want to talk to somebody eventually. I just wanted to get heads up on it.
Great. Thank you. Any other comments on the non-agenda items?
I was wondering about the, like, the Resolution 2016156. Is there gonna be a tent at the summer camp program after all?
Yeah.
Oh, there is, wonderful. The other thing that I was wondering about is in terms of...
It was in our abstract, it was in abstract features.
It's a little bit commercial tent at the summer camp for the entire... Wonderful. And where will it be?
On top of the upper part of the lower field.
Upper part of the lower field.
The old field that we can't use anymore will be, it'll be the upper part.
Okay. And the new proposed local law, is there a particular reason why it's just applies to the rec committee and not all the other committees? The aging and the, like, why?
Because it... Go ahead.
The rec committee was organized differently than all the other committees.
And like with a lot of things in Ryanbeck, it was neither a commission nor a committee. It wasn't done properly. We don't also want, we had concerns about the committee overseeing an employee. And we needed, Warren suggested that we rewrite it.
So of the, what are there, three members? They're all going to be terminated or...
No, the committee's gonna be terminated and then reestablished as a new, under the new chart. And we'll reappoint people to the committee.
So will I be reappointed?
If we decide to reappoint him.
Okay, because I was asked to resign.
Yes, you were asked to resign.
So part of the, part of the thing that I find befuddling is that I was asked to resign because of this particular issue about the, about the tent that I raised for the summer campers. If I could just finish. About the tent that I raised for the summer campers. And I was miffed over the fact that we weren't granting a tent for summer campers and exposing them to a situation where they're, they could have heat stroke or heat exhaustion. And as a result of that, because I was so pressing on the issue, I was asked to resign. And now there's this new local law that you're posing to have, which will effectively remove me from the committee. And it's not right. I think it's pretty sad. I think it's pretty sad that as a committee member for five years and all that I've contributed to this town, that that's how you're going about it. There's no local law on the table that'll apply to the aging committee, to the cemetery committee, or any other committee except for the rec committee. And it happens to come on the heels of me pressing you on this commercial tent and after you asked me to resign. I'm just saying, it just seems a little retaliatory and it doesn't seem fair. In addition, I wasn't even told. I've been on this committee for five years and I happened to pick up the, look at the agenda last night. I happened to pick up, look at the agenda last night and that's when I learned.
Excuse me, you're addressing the board. You're here to address the board.
Well, I understand, but I know that you're gonna dismiss me and you're not gonna listen to anything I say because that's what you did with all of your emails. You said basta, enough. That's how you treated a volunteer that has committed to this town and has sought to take care of the young and the old. Now, I'm sure you'll dismiss me and you won't pay any attention to me. But as a public servant, you should listen. And maybe, maybe at least the public will hear that you've dismissed me, asked me to resign after all I put into this.
Are you saying me specifically?
Well, you were copied on the email asking me to resign. And when I asked to meet with you, you didn't say anything. You never responded to me. You dismissed me. You're a public servant and I'm a public servant. And that's not a way to treat a volunteer. Each of these volunteers give of their time and their energy. And this local law is retaliatory. And I guarantee you, this board will not reappoint me because I said what was the truth. That putting no money into these children after you raised camp prices twenty-five percent, you eliminated the sibling discount, you eliminated Memorial Day and Labor Day for free, and then you said, oh, well, we have no fields. To me, that struck me as that's not fair. That's not fair to parents to not know that this is what's going on. And I, and I pressed the issue and I got no answers. Instead, I, I said, why is it seventy thousand dollars is being committed from a contingency fund and we can't pay a four thousand dollar bill on that field and take care of the summer campers who are paying so much more money? Why did I say that was wrong? Why did I say?
We're gonna, okay, hold on, hold on one second.
Instead, I'm almost finished.
Yep.
Instead, I was never responded to. I asked several of you and I know some of you are public servants for a lifetime and volunteers for a lifetime. So you know what it takes. You know what it takes to be committed and ideological about taking care of people. And the rest of your community is hoping that you're gonna speak up. The reality is that seventy thousand was, was committed to another project. And I think it's wonderful that you're talking about fields. And I think it was wonderful, Mr. Gill, that you removed several things in that local law that was completely arbitrary. Things, things like they were going to be penalized and written charges. Thank you for picking that up. But if you're gonna pass a law on a committee, why are you singling out the rec committee other than you want to get rid of me? Who spoke against you? And really, at the end of the day, you're putting up the very tent that I urged you to put up for the summer campers. Because I think in, at the end of the day, you knew it wasn't right.
Okay, thank you. Alan, do you want to address this?
No.
I imagine not.
Thank you, Linda.
If you want to talk to us.
I offered to talk to you, I offered to meet with you and to you and got radio silence.
I'll tell you why.
Radio silence.
Because you're angry and you yell at us a lot.
Shouldn't I be angry?
No, and thank you.
I'm angry for the rest of the community that you didn't, you didn't have the answers.
Thank you.
No one had any issue with the questions you asked or the issue you raised. My issue was with your behavior.
Sub, style, substance.
No, 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 stop.
Style, substance.
Alan's, Alan's speaking.
I'm done, I'm not talking to you anymore.
People don't...
That's not what a public servant does. That's not how problems are resolved.
Nobody on the committee wants to work with you and you are abusive to our rec director.
There are two people on the committee, Tom and I.
We're done.
And we have a great relationship.
You serve, the rec committee members serve...
Centralized government that doesn't tolerate differing opinions and exercises control over many aspects of life.
I said...
Called totalitarianism.
You have anything to say? I'm sorry, I even...
I'll just repeat what I said. Nobody had any issue with the questions you raised or what you wanted. My issue was with how you behaved at the meeting.
It's style over substance.
It's not style.
It's lack of...
I will not tolerate the way you behave at meetings.
And the way you treat people.
No, the way you treat people, the way you dismiss people is that basta, that's how you end it.
Yes, enough, enough of your yelling, enough.
But you won't meet with me and you won't sit down with me.
I was copied on an email chain and I will not tolerate the bad behavior. It's abusive.
Yeah, you've never met with me to find out the whole story. You took one side and asked the truth.
Is there any further, any further discussion? I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss a personal matter pertaining to a specific individual. I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss a personal matter pertaining to a specific individual. Thank you. We'll be back. Okay, we're back from our executive session. I'd like to make a motion to hire Nancy Habanowski for our zoning board of appeals secretary for, as did... All in favor?
At, at the rate of thirty dollars.
Any opposed? And you'll call her and get her on board?
Yes, I will.
Great, thank you. Any other business? I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Thank you. Good night, everybody.